... June 21st. It's called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everybody.
Our children fight back! Our children fight back! Our children fight back!
Trying to do the children's business.
Yeah.
Our children fight back! Our children fight back! Our children fight back!
Okay, we're gonna recess. We're gonna recess. Item being voted this evening has been posted as required by state law. Meeting is being televised live. Director Espaza Brown is participating by phone this evening. Ms. Houston, is there any student testimony?
Yes, we have two. Savannah Mullen and Rezika Smith.
Welcome. Welcome. You can state your name and there'll be a green light. When it turns red, it's time to wrap it up.
Okay.
Appreciate you being here.
Hello, my name is Savannah Mullen. I am a seventh grade student at King Elementary. My address is 3976 Northeast Mallory Street and I'm here to talk about the name change of King Elementary. To Portland Public School Board of Education Superintendent Carol Smith, we as King's School parents and students have knowledge that the school was originally named Martin Luther King Junior Elementary but has been changed to King Elementary. We all request that the school name be changed back to Martin Luther King Junior as it was. King can be viewed as Rodney King, Don King, et cetera. We would all appreciate if we can have back the name of our school that we know and love. When contacting the state, they say there is no record of Martin Luther King Junior in Portland, Oregon, only King. On Portland maps and online, it's labeled as King in the King neighborhood. For a fiscal statement, we have contacted Portland Public Schools District Office but no one has responded back with the price. But to raise the money, we do plan on having fundraisers such as car washes, cookouts, bake sales, et cetera.
Hello, my name is Resika Smith. I am a former student at King's School. My address is 3976 Northeast Mallory Street. I'm here to talk to you about our school name being changed from Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School to King's School. I have been going to King for 10 years and when I first originally started there, it was Martin Luther King Junior Elementary. And for it to be changed back to King, for it to be changed to King and for none of us to be notified is not okay in our minds. Credit Scott is the one who gave us the name in honor of her own husband. So please, let us do the right thing and change our name back to Martin Luther King Elementary School. Our name being changed to King is not okay to us for us not to be notified, but not only that, but for the world not to know. Us going home, telling our families and them not even knowing it is what's the worst part. We would like our original name back. It is on the front of the school and it should be always the school name. We look it up on Google, because when you look it up on Google, it is King. It should be its original name like it was in the first place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy?
Was there, Superintendent Smith, was there ever an actual decision that reverted King back to Martin Luther King to King or did it just become that that's what usage was or?
I don't know the answer to that question, but we'll find out. And I don't believe you have to raise any money to have that happen either. That's just to make the request and we'll figure out what the official status is. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, Ms. Houston, any other student testimony?
No.
Okay, at this time, we'll have public testimony. Ms. Houston, you got anybody signed up?
We do. We have six and our first two speakers are Kelly Cook and Cecile Evans. Cecile. Our next two, Oscar Gilson and Teresa Rayford.
So does that mean I get the six-minute status? All right, so for the record, my name is Teresa Rayford. I am the auntie of Andre Dupree Payton. On September 26th of this year, of last year, I requested an audit because my nephew grew up in this school system. He was within the SEI industry or corporation or academy from the time that he was seven years old and like a lot of his other friends, he was killed by the time he was 19 years old. There was a celebration between Multnomah County Health Department and our Portland Public Schools at not only Grant but also at SEI. When I was here visiting during the time that he was tragically murdered and then celebrated for propaganda or pander or whatever the hell you guys want to call it, I was very upset when I found out that not only had our kids been failing within the school system, but that there was no leadership that cared about their outcomes. I remember what my nephew used to tell me is that there was nothing for him. Children like him, the ones that didn't succeed at A, the ones that didn't have athletic scholarships or any other type of academia acumen attached to them. Him and his friends dying at 19 years old, not realizing what it feels like to be 21, not getting the chance to have their own apartment or get into a house or a job or to raise children or even have children. That's an epidemic in our community and you guys are making it seem as it's a problem and you have this thing that you call equity. Well, I worked for CPA for several years and equity to me is a return on investment. And with the money that's going into the school district and through the state, through the Oregon Department of Education, to foster the futures of our most vulnerable children, not only the children of color but those with disabilities and IEPs, that money, there's no accountability, there's no oversight. When I asked about equity and culturally competent programming that would help steer our children into industry-related vocational-type training, like what Steve was fighting for when he ran for the school board, nobody cared to listen to that. They even said that education wasn't a measure for public safety, as we know that you guys believe that here, because public safety and our children's health and welfare wasn't on the top of your agenda because you had so many other successes to deal with. As far as Carol Smith saying that June of 2017 would be the time that she resigns, I think that the federal government and our president and everybody else that says that they care about the children in this country, and I'm talking about the blackmail achievement and all that, and our young women, our young girls that are being slammed and pulled out of school by police officers, the ones that are having to defend themselves because the teachers don't think that they have to be involved in the situation, our children that are pushed to basketball playing for the last 10 minutes of class instead of being responsible or being taught accountability like others because you think that you have to pacify us with a pat on the head or a breakfast in the morning. The money for those type of things, for that which you call culturally competency, which means that you probably think that our children don't have the ability to think or learn and they just need to be patted on the head, those things right there, those are a problem. Those add to the health and welfare of our community. Those are the additions that you guys have that are making it a very vulnerable place for the school-to-prison pipeline. Every time I see something on the news here in Oregon about children that have disadvantages, you use faces that look like mine. There's children in this community that aren't black that have the same type of disadvantages. But because you guys are fond of this segregated system where you separate communities based on their colors or their disabilities or their different ableness, that's what we have here is a catastrophic issue. This is an epidemic. We're not just talking about the lead, we're talking about the leadership. The leadership that says that we can accompany a child's problem within the social welfare reforms through community policing. Community policing means that if the parents don't medicate their children that don't have resources in the classroom because the administration thinks that the teachers don't need them, it means that if we don't medicate our children, then your Portland partners, your community partners, your community policing partners, they basically admit that the children, they tell these, they tell your partnerships that these children are at risk, then they say that the risk of harm is with their family. People that look like me, who are at the disadvantage that you guys call vulnerable, when we stand up for our children, our children are put into the foster care system. That is a disadvantage of using your voice. That's why you don't see black parents here. That's why you see gatekeepers, the ones you guys give standing ovations for, the ones who educated me, telling you that they had nooses around. Willie Lynch is a myth. That didn't happen. That was something they used to propagandize the black movement back in the 70s and 80s. I know. My daddy wore a black jacket. You know what I'm saying? I understand that that was a myth because it was supposed to be used to get people to move and to become empowered. They were supposed to look at how disgusting our country's history is and take that challenge to do something about it. Guess what? We don't need myths to show that you guys don't give a damn about our education or our children's future. We don't need myths to make that story because we can indict you guys and we need the Department of Justice to do that. We do have six civil lawsuits and I don't understand, well, not lawsuits, investigations. And so what today, my call to action is, is that parents that have children that are children of color, children with disabilities, children that are vulnerable based on what you guys call vulnerable, maybe they have an IEP, those people need to get in contact with Don't Shoot Portland and our Community Education Panel because guess what? We have people that want to get your stories so that we can go ahead and indict this system. We have six of them on the table now and you can get in contact with us at don'tshootportland@gmail. You can call me personally if you need to at 503-752-1140. Because the federal government did think that these issues were good enough to say that we will take these investigations and they are. And so we just need your voices to let us know what's happened and we're getting those voices and we appreciate if those voices can help remove this board. And if you guys don't remove Carol before next year, then that means you don't have the backbone to be the board next year and we'll go ahead and feature you in that indictment because complicity, you know what that is, right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we have Ray Leary and Cara Colley.
Welcome.
My name is Ray Leary. I come before you to address a bit of the information that was just shared with you. It is very easy to speak about what changes or adjustments need to be made when you are not in the arena. When you are outside of the arena, you can make calls about things that you may understand or may not understand. And for the most part, for the most part, there are a lot of people who look like me in Portland, Oregon. And they don't all share. They don't all share.
Let the speaker speak.
They don't all share.
That he did last time when he went past his time.
They don't all share a similar perspective or methodology. So I would say to you, I would say to you, in terms of going forward, if you really are afraid of what's being said, then you over-speak it. You over-speak it. But if you really have courage and believe in your convictions, you let other people share theirs as well. Yours is not threatened by that. So if over-talk is the only strategy you have to get your point across, then work it to the bone. But if you have an idea, if you have an idea that merits a discussion, if you have an argument that merits a discussion, we're happy to have that.
Where's the receding rain?
Because again, what we're talking about is personal, as you can tell. What we're talking about is personal. Names are being referenced. Names are being referenced. And it's personal. So to that end, I will say this. I will yield the rest of my time.
Excuse me. I think we'll recess.
Kids are dying. Kids are dying. Yeah, I've got a noose around my neck.
Recession.
Kids are dying. Kids are dying. Kids are dying.
Okay. We are going to continue this meeting with the people that signed up to testimony.
I signed up.
Then you get, then you, then Ms. Houston is...
I just have to go. I just have to go.
Okay. Then you can, we'll give you your three minutes.
Thank you. Can I get that right now?
After I tell you what we're doing here. If, we're going to continue to hear the testimony and then continue our meeting.
Okay, you don't have to have me on the record or nothing. I just got this...
No, you're going to get on the record. If we can't continue the meeting because of disruptions, then we will continue the meeting in another room. It'll still be televised and everybody will see it. Okay, so.
Parents, yeah.
All right. Go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Okay. I just got a question here. Now, Oregon is...
Please, please state your, please state your name.
Okay, my name is Thor, okay?
And your last name?
Presley.
Okay.
So, at the same time, now that you know my name, Oregon has a law that if you retrieve their rainwater and you get caught, that's a felony. You can go to jail. Now, that's a crime. Now, if Oregon controls all the water, who's responsible for the waters that's in these schools? And where's the crime coming from? And who's held accountable for that? I just got a question. I'm not the smartest, I never did graduate, but these are things that just flow through my little mind here, okay? So at the same time with that, there's accountability and I know that, you know, I met them the other day, okay? And, and trust me, they are doing a fantastic job. Carol Smith, I really don't know you. I don't think you've been doing your job quite well, but again, you know, I didn't vote for you. So at the same time, at the same time, my question is, okay, if you guys can put a felony on somebody's head, if it starts raining right now, Oregon owns the rain that comes out the damn sky. Water is free. That's nature. So you guys explain this to me, who controls it? Who controls what goes in the water after it comes from the sky? I want to know. We need to know. See, this is the kind of stuff that messes me up. I may go and have me a beer. I may have two beers, but that question's still on my mind. Can y'all help me with this? Carol, can you? I'll get your assistance too. But anyway, Katie, can you help me? Steve? Mike? Amy? Tom? I just want to know. That's an honest question. Say what now?
Is your premise correct? Is it a felony to take the rainwater?
It is, it is a felony.
I grew up in Tillamook, you know, and I don't, you could have taken all the water out of the place.
Listen, it's a felony in Oregon, okay? If you, that's called stealing.
The lead didn't come from our water supply. It came from what we did in the school.
We don't know where it came from.
Well, it came from the pipes and the fixtures.
Here? Here? Okay, so where was it discovered and when was that?
When it came to, I don't know, we can't figure out when it was discovered.
Okay, would May, would prompt anybody to go ahead and investigate the water after all these years?
On the 21st, on the 21st of March, it came forward. That's when...
Why was that? Because somebody found out?
We're doing, we're in the middle of a real unbiased investigation that's supposed to figure all those answers out, so it should be done in 30 days.
Is anybody in this room outside of you guys privy to that investigation? Is that open?
Not really. We're trying to do it as unbiased as we possibly can.
Could you guys call me? I would like to just sit in. I would like to be the fly on the wall.
Well, there's a super unbiased investigation where we're not sitting in even.
Oh.
We're trying to do an unbiased investigation totally.
Okay. Well, there's a couple more things, but you know what? There'll be another time. Hey, thanks for you guys' time, okay?
Appreciate it. All right. Ms. Houston.
Cara Colley and Cecile Evans.
I don't know who Cara Colley is. Do you want to speak first?
Okay.
No, because you were sitting next to that gentleman and...
I don't know.
No, please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cara Colley and I'm here to speak about teacher absences. My daughter is in third grade at Ainsworth and I'd first of all like to emphasize that she's been very fortunate to have wonderful, caring, capable teachers. I was really caught off guard though by the number of absences that her teachers had. I would estimate in kindergarten, it was about 15 days. In first grade, it's about 15 days and in second grade, about five days. Her first grade teacher would advise us, would advise the class the day before saying something like, "Oh, tomorrow I have to be out for a meeting," so my daughter would come home and tell me this. And so I started to do some research, looking into contracts and what I could find and I don't know that this is totally accurate, but this is the most I could find. So I learned that her teachers are out for three reasons. The first, sickness or family reasons, and of course, teachers should have sick days. I'm not arguing against that. The second is professional development opportunities and I learned that the PPS contract allows teachers to be out for four days of professional development. And I think that's reasonable, though I think possibly only allowing two or three days might be okay too. And the third reason teachers are called out are for PPS mandatory meetings or trainings. And I have a problem with this. Why? Why do I have a problem with this? Because first off, substitutes are just not as effective in teaching and nurturing our students. Second of all, our school year is short enough as it is and when the teacher is pulled out of the classroom, it's like making the school year even shorter. And third of all, there's all these late start days, these in-service days. Why not schedule the trainings or meetings for those times or for the first few days in August, right at the start of the school year? So I'm just asking, I'm so thankful that she's had wonderful teachers, I'm asking that just please let them stay in the classroom. Don't call them out for meetings or trainings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome. Go ahead and state your name again for the record.
Okay, my name's Cecile Evans and I've got two kids, both Portland Public Schools. So the lead issue, it really, really worries me. The way that the school board looks terrifies me. None of you represent me and I don't understand why that is. It really, really confuses me. Do you have any reasoning why there is nobody that looks like me on your board?
You have to run for election, so it would be great if we could have some candidates who are...
Do you have a program where you try and reach minorities?
Yes, we do.
So why aren't they on the board?
I don't know.
They usually tell them to wait until later.
That would be great. We have actively sought people of color to be on the board.
It's very, okay.
Julie is on the phone. She's a Latina.
Is he going to be the next guy on the board? That's kind of what I'm thinking. So, so, okay, so my other thing that I...
We have a vote.
Absolutely, and I use it. My other thing that I wanted to ask is, how is it that this gentleman who has lunch on Wednesdays gets $220,000 on a no-bid contract if I'm not mistaken and teachers are barely making enough to make ends meet and they're with our kids every day, five days a week? Or how is he making that much and we don't have all the proper school books in our schools? We don't even have updated history books in our schools. So I don't understand how that works either. Carol Smith, do you have an answer to that?
No, we're just taking comments.
This is to listen to your comments, not to respond to that.
You know, it's a question though, it's not a comment. You guys have been answering other people quite, you answered a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, I don't think that the premise is exactly right. I don't think, I've heard things on the internet about $1,000 an hour. That's, that's not taking it into account. It's not taking into account what the actuality of that particular program is. It's just not standing back and looking in. If you go out there and look and see what is actually taking place, it may, I do that and then I'd come back and complain after, after we looked. I don't know if anybody who's here, I've been out and looked at that program and I supported that program even though I felt very unsupported by Mr. Leary at a school board meeting not too long ago, but I went out and supported that program because I, because the mentoring that I believe that they're doing in that program, and it's not just Mr. Leary, it's other people, that that mentoring is really worthwhile and pretty good, and pretty good stuff. That's why I support it. Otherwise, I wouldn't support it. And that's the, that's the way that I, and I don't know if we've been out, I don't, have we been out and looked? Have you guys been out and looked and fall through and stuff?
We know the kids.
Well, I don't know about that.
And they're saying they're not getting enough. They're getting more at Don't Shoot rallies than they're getting with this guy for breakfast.
Well, I don't know.
And so that, to me, that doesn't make any sense. Don't Shoot is free. And so if we're able to educate our kids like that...
I'm clarifying here, I think. I like the Don't Shoot stuff. I think you get a lot at the Don't Shoot rallies. I don't think that's not the case. But at the same time, I think if you go look, then I think you'll see that there's a lot of good stuff going on in that program. And I think it just, it kind of got singled out in a way because we're trying, we're trying to work with the contracts and make them, and, and we're trying to work with those contracts and make them better and that kind of got singled out. There's a lot of other contracts that we've been waiting on.
Oh, absolutely. And the thing is, the thing is that that...
Thank you. I think, I think your red, your red light is up.
Okay. I just have one more thing and I'll wrap it up. So that's a piece as far as the accountability. You guys all need to be held accountable, not just this man. He did get singled out and I noticed that and, you know, it happens just because there wasn't enough time. He gave a really long speech, Mike Rosen, he had to say what he had to say and you guys were mad and then you gave that standing ovation over what was clearly a bunch of BS. But I have a feeling that if you guys were all held accountable for your jobs, you wouldn't be here either. You see that you have a community that is furious. This anger isn't fake, you know? We're upset.
Thank you.
And so we need change.
Thank you.
We need it now. We need change. We need it now.
Is she not standing? She's not standing. She's not standing. There's going to come in...
Ms. Houston, anybody else? Okay. All right, so, uh... We will now consider Resolution 5289, Amendment Number Two to the 21516 Budget for School District Number One, J., Multnomah County, Oregon. Yusuf, do you want to? And David?
Board of Directors, good evening. This is Chief Financial Officer and I have David Wine who will present the Amendment Number Two for the budget. And I'll just turn it to David. Thank you.
Thank you, Yusuf. So Board of Members, as you can see from the staff report, this is looking at the budget for the fiscal year that's about to finish. Every year, we do two things at this time of year. We check appropriation levels against expenditures in every fund to make sure that we're going to be in compliance with budget law and have adequate money appropriated. And we also check with staff on potential carryover where there are projects or programs that were budgeted for in the current year, whereas happenstance has it, the timing of that work has spilled over into the next year and we carry, we move money from the current year budget to next year budget so we still have funds available for it. Those, there's modest things in the budget amendment to cover those two things. And then the third thing, which is exceptional for this year, is there's an increase in appropriation in the general fund of $400,000 to cover the cost of providing water to schools at the end of the school year and some contract costs that will be incurred before the end of the fiscal year. And that $400,000 is funded by reducing contingency. And that's essentially what's happening with this budget amendment.
Okay. I think, Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the budget? Okay. The Board will now consider Resolution Number 5289, Amendment Number Two.
Excuse me, Chair Curler, we need a motion in second.
We do, excuse me, thank you. Is, is there a, a motion to approve? It's not moved. Approved by Director Anthony. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Director Konstam. Is there any discussion on the resolution? All those, oh. Paul.
I'd just like to make a very brief comment since I'm often fairly critical about financial issues. This was a wonderfully clear and straightforward explanation and I really appreciate it and I want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the Board will now vote on Resolution 5289. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Julie, I think I heard a yes from the phone.
You got a yes.
Okay. Resolution 5289 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Voting yes. Okay, great. The Board...
Before we go on, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have somebody, Carol, do we have a person here who's, do we have a, is Jolly here or some?
Jolly is not here.[1751.51]
Jolly is not here.
Is there somebody, 'cause I looked through, one of the, one of the things that I remember, and I don't know if I'm correct, I don't think so, is that you can't, in, in our policy, we have something that says you can't vote on the phone, but you can be in the meeting. But I don't know if that's right, because I didn't, I looked and looked, but I couldn't find it. So, my assumption is that it's fine to have Julie voting on the phone. I, and then I thought, well, maybe it's, it's in the state open meetings law, and I looked through the, all the state open meetings law today at some length, and it said you could vote on the phone, so I'm, I'm assuming that's the case. And we're working under that. I was just, if we had somebody who had time to kinda look at that, it'd be great, but, but I'm not worried about it.
All right, thank you for that clarification. The board, acting as the Budget Committee, held three public hearings on the proposed 21617 budget, and on May 24th, the Budget Committee approved the 21617 budget, which we are now considering super intensively. Is anything you'd like to add to this?
No, just that the TSCC considered this earlier this evening and gave it its blessing.
Okay. The board will now consider Resolution 5290, impose taxes and adoption of the fiscal year 21617 budget for School District Number One J, Maloma County Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 5290. Ms. Houston, is any citizen comment?
Yes, we have one, Susan Stone.
All right. Is there any discussion on the board, seeing that we don't have Susan? Steve?
I was just asking this, Uberdina, did we add any money since last time when I said I wasn't voting for it, unless we added more money for maintenance, particularly emergency maintenance? We didn't add any more.
We've made, made no changes since the last budget.
I can't, I really believe we need some money, a couple million dollars for emergency maintenance in this budget. I voted for this budget because I thought it was the best I could do. I don't think it's a very good budget, I've said that all along, everybody knows that. But they, and it's got a lot of things that we're, we're spending money here when we should be spending it there, and I can't, I'm not gonna go into that. I've already gone into that. But, I can't vote for it, because I just think we need to have an emergency maintenance budget, specifically where we go out and take care of the emergency maintenance the best that we can. That's the first thing. And the second reason is, I, I think this summer, we should be taking care of the lead paint problem the best that we can. And I don't think there's any money in here to do that, that I can see. So, even though there's lead paint that we know about out there, we're not really going out to fix it, because we don't have the money to fix it, I don't believe. And so, we got the lead paint, but we're not doing anything about it this summer. Now, we're going to go into, hire an engineering firm to go and look at all these things and do it, which I'm for, I think it's a great idea. But, we got lead paint that we know about, and we should go out, be going out there and fixing it, and we should find enough money to at least make a dent in that of some sort, but it's not in there. If it was in there, it would've been in, we'd have been doing it, because if it was in the budget, it would've been in the last budget, and we'd have done it, and we wouldn't have had things like the mess out at George Middle School, for instance. And so, I can't vote for it. I wish I could.
All right, thank, thank you, Steve. Any other comments? Paul?
Very briefly, I'd just say that I support Steve's position. I think that, given the circumstances we find ourselves in, we really need to be more responsive to the maintenance issues, and specifically to the lead paint problems that we know we have.
Any other comments?
Just a couple of things I would add. One is that, you know, we've known that we have underfunded our maintenance and facilities needs for a long time in this, in this district, and we had virtually no discussion during all of our budget deliberations about our maintenance and operations needs. We couldn't even, I couldn't even get $140,000 of support for, for relief custodians to address the need-
I voted for that, too.
Okay, right on, Steve. To address those needs. So, I just would like to see us be, take responsibility for looking ahead and proactively at really how we wanna approach our whole budget next time around, given all the needs in this district. And also, just wanna reference the conversation we had in today's bond committee meeting, where we are giving serious thought and analysis right now to devoting a significant part of the proposed 2016 bond to capital investments that address health and safety issues in our school facilities.
Steve?
No. It's serious business to vote against this bond, because we can't, we can't pay our employees without a budget. And it's one of the reasons that I voted for a budget, I would assume, last time, 'cause we had need to have a budget. But, I think this is serious enough to, to not pay people. Secondly, would, and Amy brought up a really good point, and hopefully, we're going to take a really good, solid look at the next bond, work around, and make sure that we're taking care of some of these facility problems. But, on our next budget, we need to do it entirely differently. I know we were just a second, it was the second part of the budget this time, we just kinda repeated. But on the next budget, we need to start with the classroom and the school, figure out what we need in those classrooms and schools, and then we need to build out from there. We don't, the way that we're building the budget is the reverse. We're not, we're not seeing what, we're not putting the schools together and then putting a budget that supports the schools, and an administration that supports the schools. If we did, we wouldn't have a lot of the messes we had, 'cause you'd have the schools in pretty good shape. And then, we do, we've been doing it the reverse for years, which is to have the schools support the administration, which has their things that they wanna get done, the testing and that stuff. And so, we build the schools around the administration instead of the reverse. And in this next budget, I hope that we can see ourselves clear to start with the school. What do we want out there in that K-5 school? Do we need reading teachers out there to help kids read? What is it that we really need out there? And we start there, and we go out. What do we need in the middle schools? Our high schools are really in pretty good shape comparatively. They really are, they're not, you compare our high schools to high schools around the state of Oregon, they're pretty darn good, in some cases terrific. But, our middle schools and our middle grades and our elementary schools, we've got lots of work. And the only way I can see to get at it is to start with the school and build out on our next budget. And I hope we have the courage and the wherewithal and the intelligence to do that on our next budget. And so, we will then get schools that we kinda would like, and then we will get administration which supports what's taking place there. That's how it's supposed to work, in my opinion, at least. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Steve. Any other comments? Julie, would you like to say anything before we vote?
Well, my major concern, well, I mean, I concur with what's being said, that we need more money in maintenance, and I think that that will be how we will be refocusing the bond, to consider some of those needs. I would also remain concerned about the contingency, the low contingency that we have, and not sure how to strike a balance, you know, of really working towards increasing our contingency. We see what happens, you know, when, when there's a need with nothing to fill the, plug the holes with. So, that's my major concern. I think that it is important, though, that we pass this budget now, given everything, just to ensure, I mean, we need to keep instruction occurring for our kids, summer schools coming up. So, I will vote for it.
Okay, thank you.
So, my, I have three concerns regarding the budget. The first one is one that I've mentioned, I think, at every budget hearing we've had, and that has to do with our reserves. We have a $572 million budget. Our board policy is that we put 3% of that into reserves, and we are aspirational at 5%. 3% would mean $17.15 million, and we currently are at $13.73 million. So, that means we're $3.4 million short in even reaching our board policy. So, I can't understand why we are passing a budget that doesn't comply with board policy. If we took it up to 5%, it would be $28.6 million, a 14.9% difference. Now, I realize that that's a lot of money to try and take out of the current budget to make it 5% our aspirational, but we should, as a board, have a, reach our 3% threshold now, and then we should be talking about increases every single year. I can't imagine, in my own personal life, not having a savings account, not having money set aside for my home. But we do that with our district and our, our over 90, 90 buildings that we have here, and we're not taking care of them. And putting money into a bond to help with health and safety is a great idea, but it is not maintenance. Maintenance, thank you. Maintenance is separate from building new buildings. Maintenance is something that we need to be very concerned about, and we haven't for over 30 years, since the passage of Measure Five, when we, our funds for schools started to be depleted. This district, along with a lot of other districts, has put most of their money into the classroom to make sure that we have teachers there, we have smaller class sizes, that we extend, we have our school year, especially in this district. We've been very focused on teachers in the classroom, small classes, and a full school year. We haven't set aside the money that we should for maintenance, and the bond isn't gonna change Finally, in addition to reserves and maintenance, I'm concerned about the salaries of our staff. Since September, we, we, which is nine months now, we've had a freeze on salaries, and because of this, we have not been able to compete for new people, and we've been consistently losing our best and brightest out of this district. The people that we grew up from being teachers, principals, and now directors. We're losing these people. They're getting better packages in other districts across the, across the region. For example, Charlene Williams did a wonderful job at Roosevelt, a fantastic job at Roosevelt. Well, she's not gonna be here next year. She's gonna be in Camas. Shay James, a fantastic job turning Franklin around, and now building our CTE program in this district. She's not gonna be here, she's going to North Clackamas. Jorge Meza, an assistant, assistant principal who was going to move to be a principal, said no, he's going to Centennial. And with all of these people, we could not meet the amount that they were receiving in these other districts. Ross Hume is going to Metro, Andrea Hubbs to Centennial, Mary Anderson to the Oregon Department of Education, Larry Bingham, the Oregon Health Authority, Natasha Butler, Reynolds, the list goes on and on and on, of very excellent people that we have grown up in this district and have not been able to retain because of this salary freeze. So, my wish is that we could, or my ask is that we do away with this salary freeze, and we see what happens with the Audit Committee. And if there is something that we need to do after we have an audit, then that's fine. But it's been nine months that we have had our hands tied and, and with an inability to keep our best and brightest people or to hire anybody else. So, those are the three things that I am most concerned about. The reserves, the maintenance, and the salary freeze that's keeping us from keeping our best and brightest people here.
Pam, I raised this issue on the Audit Committee seven months ago, knowing that we would be in this very position, and I am, you know, really upset to hear that we are losing so many people that we need in our district. So, I agree that it's critically important at our next Audit Committee to review this and lift that freeze.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the budget? All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 5290. All in favor, please, I, please indicate by saying-
Let's do a roll call.
Okay, let's do a roll call. You wanna call the roll?
Sure. Director Anthony?
No.
Director Knowles, do you want Julie? Oh, Director Asparza Brown?
Yes.
I'm gonna pass for it now. Director Konstam?
Yes.
Director Rosen?
No.
Director Buell? Chair Curler? We have a tie, three yes, three no, and one abstaining. I know how important it is for our staff to be paid July 1st, so I'm not gonna stand in the way of the budget, so I will be yes reluctantly.
Okay, the budget is passed by a vote of four to three, with Student Representative-
Yes.
Levine, yes.
I don't believe in walk-on amendments, resolutions, any-
Before we vote on the remainder of our business agenda, I'd like to point out that we have a revised Resolution 5288 before us, that contains two additional contracts which are highlighted in the yellow. Ms. Houston, are there any other changes to the business agenda?
There is none.
All right. It is, are there any? Sure.
On the business agenda? We didn't have the incrustible people back. What happened to them?
So, actually, I think it's still- Do we know it?
Are we still messing around with that?
It's pulled off.
It's fine if we are.
Nutrition Services is still working on that.
And then I have another question.
Go ahead, Steve.
The health screening, provide employee blood screening during this summer?
Okay, hey, just, if you have questions, what-
You want me to pull them off?
Yeah.
Pull off the blood screen, so we can talk about it, okay?
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm trying to locate that one.
It's one of the ones in yellow there, second one in yellow.
Okay. That is pulled out. Any other, any other pulls?
Tom, I'm, I'm sorry, someone may have pulled it already, and I was, I was busy trying to find it. Can we pull the CH2M Hill contract also, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we will now vote on the business Resolution 5288, minus those two contracts. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The, any abstentions?
I meant to say aye, sorry.
The business agenda is passed by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative-
Aye.
Voting aye, okay. We will now consider Resolution 5289, which is this CH2M Hill contract.
Which one?
The CH2M Hill contract. You know, I think we need to have a motion and a-
It's a motion.
Yeah, motion and second. So, is there a motion and a second to consider 5289?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
That's me. The district is in discussions with CH2M Hill regarding a contract to assess operations in the facilities and maintenance department of the district and proposed improvements. My husband, David Knowles, is a Vice President, area manager of CH2M Hill. This fact creates an actual conflict for me, and as a result, I will not be participating in any deliberate deliberation or decision on the contract, and I will announce this conflict in my rec- conflict in my recusal at this board meeting, and I will leave while you're discussing it.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, Paul?
Yes. Yusef, are you the point person for this contract?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I was part of the initial discussions, and at that point, I had some concerns about the actual assessment that CH2M Hill was going to be doing on our buildings. In particular, the people they were assigning to it did not seem to have the capacity to get through our buildings, certainly not in the timeline they were proposing, and not even this summer. Now, in what we have seen with the revised proposal, I still have some questions about that, because initially, each assessment for each building, they said, was going to take forty man-hours, and it looks from the numbers like that's been cut back to fifteen. And is that going to be adequate for the need?
So we revised the scope. We scaled it back significantly due to the cost and other factors, and to give us time to do full assessment. So you can look at this as the first phase in the assessment. We're trying to focus on the cafeteria and the food preparation facilities, and that's what we're trying to address at this point largely. And so that's why the scaling back in number of hours you see in the, in the scope.
Okay, so the scope is not for building-wide, it's for areas of critical need?
Correct.
It looks, yes, I'll get to you, but first, it looks from the number of people, number of hours, that they're going to be working on this for the next seven weeks, at least.
Correct.
So I wanted it explicit and very public, they are not going to be through with even the first phase of this assessment until right before the kids come back to school.
I don't know if I have guarantees that's going to happen. We will try our best, but that's where we are.
At best, I should have said, okay.
No, go ahead, keep going.
No, that's good for now. Steve, please.
So this is an assessment of risk assessment for each of our schools? What is it specifically they're assessing here?
So we're focusing on the food preparation facilities and cafeterias at this point, because that's where the priority. We want to make sure we can prepare the food with fresh water, that we make sure it's good water to use it for that purpose. So that's, that's the scope of work. We're focusing on the cafeterias and just making the assessment. In addition to that, it's providing us gap analysis in term of where we are.
Beg your pardon, would you repeat that, please?
Gap analysis, so the look at the facility, the look, get the water reading, which is what we're doing as we speak, they'll analyze that, they'll look at the cafeteria and the food preparation facility and tell us what the problem is. That's the extent of the assessment that we're going to do.
No lead paint?
No.
Asbestos?
This is not environmental assessment.
On this one, no. Lead paint and asbestos. This is focused on the water.
It's just water.
Okay.
Okay.
As long as I know where we're going.
Yeah.
What we're doing.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you for asking those questions and your response, because now that raises another By gap analysis, this means that CH2M Hill will tell us what we need to do with the water sources in those critical areas in order to make them safe.
No.
I, no.
No.
They will tell us what's wrong with our facilities. That's what they're going to tell us. There is no recommendation in term of what's our action plan. That's, that's a different phase, a different engagement.
Which you need, you need to have the assessment before you make that case.
Correct, correct. That will give us the foundation to establish that, yep.
Steve?
So it tells us, like, is it lead in the pipes or the lead in the faucet? Things like that?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. My questions are on the next thing.
Okay. Paul, any other?
No, thank you. I think we've got that clear now, so.
Okay. I mean, it's, it is, it is a scaled back version of Phase One that we need to do, in my view.
Okay.
All those in favor of Resolution 5289? Please indicate by saying yes.
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 All those opposed with abstention from Director Knowles?
And she said yes.
And Julie said yes, so the resolution passes six to zero with student representative?
Yes.
Voting yes, okay. We now will consider 5290. Is there a motion to consider it?
So moved.
Been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Konstam. 5290, discussion. Steve?
I'm going to use this to ask some questions about where we are. So we, we don't have a plan to look at the lead paint in our schools this summer. I mean, I haven't heard one. This isn't one.
No.
We're going to test for, test people for lead, which is what this is.
Not beyond the scope of what would be normally included in our maintenance budget. Right. Well, we have done some, and I will say the last time we did a, a one-time investment, part of what we put money in for was lead abatement, lead paint abatement, in, I think we had four school sites.
Yeah, we did four, we did an abatement in four schools. In fact, I talked to the guy, I think it was a woman, actually.
And do we need more money to do that? Yes.
Very limited, so we could have, and we know we have some lead paint in some other areas. Are we working to get that?
Hang on, I'm going to have David Hubbs come up and speak to this specifically.
How are we going to find out where that lead paint is and what we need to do to take care of it?
Let me ask David Hubbs to speak to this specifically.
Or the asbestos, which is hanging around out there. Do we have, I mean, I don't know what we got or not got, and I'm not sure anybody does, and I definitely think we should know, and we should be working towards taking care of it.
Good evening. Again, David Hubbs, Senior Director, Asset Management. So to answer your question, we, this year, out of our capital budget allocation in Fund 438, Fund 438, have allocated $125,000 for lead paint abatement. There's an annual carve-out in our capital budget for that. In addition, we have our annual allocation of $50,000 that we're getting a grant from the City of Portland Water Bureau. That's an annual grant we've had for eight or nine years that will go towards lead paint remediation. I think as Superintendent Smith indicated, we could certainly use more, but that is what we have carved out for this particular year associated with lead paint specifically. Your other question related to asbestos and other items, we also have an annual carve-out of our same capital fund associated with hazardous materials. Covers a whole variety of things from indoor air quality testing to asbestos abatement, the gamut of health and safety. And I do not have that specific number in our carve-out for this year, but there is a, an allocation that we made in our capital budget for addressing those types of issues. And that tends to be the broken floor tile that we need to go in and abate and things like that on smaller scale asbestos abatement.
So, so we've got a lot of lead paint out there that we know about that we're not abating. If you want to use the abating word, I think it is, probably. Is that the answer? We got a lot of lead paint out in our schools that we're not taking care of.
We do. Our school, the age of our school buildings, we have lead in a variety of systems, including our pipes. That's correct.
Well, I don't mean in the pipes.
And in our lead paint as well. Paint today still continues to have aspects of lead in it on a modern day paint today. But yes, from the age of our buildings, we do have lead paint in our buildings.
So how many buildings do you think we got lead paint in?
I couldn't answer that specifically.
Do we know where the lead paint is?
I know, but I will say that, because I was in the Bond Committee today, and they're, they are doing that assessment as we speak, is my understanding.
Or assessing the lead paint.
Yeah, so we, what we presented this morning at the Bond Committee, we indicated, I don't want to get my numbers wrong, so I won't, I won't speak that number, but we indicated roughly twenty sites that we had indicated as consideration for funding, and we had brought that forward. We indicated we needed a much broader assessment and prioritization of lead paint for, thank you, Pam. Wasn't expecting these questions this evening.
Twenty sites.
No, they, I just kind of went around the corner.
Lead paint, we identified $870,000 as an estimate for twenty sites, and that additional sites would be, continue to work through. Our recommendation was through an environmental consultant to help us to prioritize those. But most of our buildings in the district have lead paint somewhere in them. That's based purely on the age of the buildings.
The twenty sites we came up with are, are those the most serious sites, would you say? Or are, is this that we grabbed twenty and they happened to come about, kind of like we did the lead paint with the Creston and Rose City Park? We just kind of grabbed at it, and two came up, and, I mean, is that the way we did the twenty, or did?
There was a combination.
The twenty, we hadn't looked, and we said, okay, these are the most serious sites?
Right. So for the lead paint that came forward this year in the recommendation, there were, of the twenty sites, we have rankings from one to four on the condition of the lead paint. We have a variety of those in each of those categories that actually were, were in this list of twenty that we had identified. Some were some of the worst that we have, others were in areas that are, are around our smallest and youngest children who are most at risk.
So it's kind of, we kind of prioritized them.
Correct.
So we have twenty prioritized sites that would cost us $875,000 to take care of the lead paint?
That's, that's an estimate. Let me make sure that I'm clear on that. That's an estimate that we have.
We might want to give $900,000.
You might want to put a buffer on that number. That's crazy.
This is really, and I'm not preaching to you, I'm preaching to us. This is really troubling. It's troubling to me that we have twenty sites, that we know where we have lead paint, that we just had an entire national hubbub over lead in our water, which is almost every place I read, they say the lead paint is more dangerous than the lead in the water. I don't know if that's true, because I'm not an expert, but I read quite a bit lately on it, and it keeps saying that. And we're talking under a million dollars to fix these twenty major sites, basically, kind of, close to that.
Fix at least portions of the site. They may not be complete buildings.
The worst part of them, the worst, the most serious things, we're talking under a million dollars, and we can't find that money? I don't get it. I don't get, I can find the money. I'm sorry, I found the money. I'll tell you exactly where to get a million dollars. If you want to ask me, I'll tell you, there's a million dollars. And I think we need to take care of this. Maybe we need to go borrow a million dollars to take care of these sites this summer. Maybe we borrow a million dollars, and we pay it back over a period of five years. But we should be taking care of these particular sites. They're just too important to not do, and I don't understand how we can sit here and not do that, you know? I don't know. Okay, I, I can't make a motion, because there's a motion for the floor. But I think we need to not do our typical brush-off where we say we're going to look at this, and then we don't look at it. I think we need to not, I mean, district-wide, not the school board. I have a lot of faith in this school board, as a matter of fact. We've done a lot of stuff that people aren't seeing, and we're not getting credit for, and I think it's really sad in a way. But I think we need to really look and come forward with a plan to take care of this. It's $900,000. Let's find it. Let's borrow the money. Let's do what we do, let's clean up these worst sites, and then move forward with the other sites.
All right.
I agree with you, Steve.
I got, okay, I've got other questions that are about the other, that are actually about the thing that we're talking about.
Go for it.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question for Steve. Steve?
Go ahead.
Do you know what year it was discovered that lead paint was so bad?
You mean total year?
Yeah, do you know how long ago that was?
Like sixty-one or something, wasn't it? Nineteen sixty-one, I think.
So this has been a problem for a long time, including the time when you were on the school board before.
Mm-hmm. I never heard about lead paint when I was on the school board before. We were kind of dealing with race issues.
And a lot of other issues, too.
No. I mean, I didn't.
This is not a new issue.
I fixed all the plague. No, it's not a new issue. It's not a new issue. I never came, though, then. It's too bad that it didn't. I'd have sure been for fixing the paint then. Maybe we wouldn't have the problem now.
Okay, Steve, what's your question on the real issue?
Another issue is, we got money in here for, this looks to me like it's money for, it's money for teachers, provide employees' blood screenings for lead, okay? Which is fine, it's $250,000. We're going to get a lot more lead in the next three or four, next three weeks for children in lead. Do we have a plan for that? Are we in touch with the county? And is the county going to do the screening for all forty schools that we find lead in now coming up? I mean, it's going to be pretty close to forty, maybe more than that, maybe fifty? We don't know, though, because we're still trying to get stuff out of them. They're moving.
So the county has said they'll schedule their next round of clinics with us when we get back our first round, when we start getting back the water testing. So they're going to base it based on, yeah.
We have them saying that they will do that.
Yeah, they're just waiting till we get results on the water testing before they target.
Is there a, how come we didn't just covered for these employees, instead of having our own screening at $250,000? Why didn't we just pay for their, their co-pay?
You know, Steve, after the last meeting, we had a meeting with the stakeholders, and this solution was proposed in the stakeholders, and that's what the stakeholders agreed to in term of all the association representatives.
Who proposed this solution?
We proposed it, and it was a preferred method rather than pay for the co-pay.
Was it?
That's, that's what everybody agreed to.
So this is in lieu of employees going to their own providers?
Correct.
That they're covered by?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
That was right. Can, that was correct. We're correct here on this? I'm not saying you're not correct, but I'm just wondering why we chose one or the other. One, $250,000. If we did co-pays for people in those schools, would it be anywhere near $250,000? What's your co-pay?
So one of the things that was brought up is that we have to make it, we have a lot of employees who don't have insurance through the district, don't, they don't qualify for it.
Oh, really? Okay, all right, well.
This was a way to get everyone.
You're going to put everybody under the one thing? Okay, might have been cheaper to do with employees that didn't have insurance one way and the co-pay the other, but what the heck? I'm here.
All right. All those.
Tom, I'm sorry, two questions very quickly. Yusef, how many of the employees is this for? Is this for everyone?
This is for all employees, yes.
Thank you. And what kind of outreach are we going to do to let them know? And is there a time deadline?
I don't have the info. Our benefit office will be doing that. They'll be sending, one of the outreach we will do is put brochures for them in the envelope for the payroll, so we make sure we reach them at home. And there will be other mechanism. We're going to go through the association, send email, and I believe the letter is being drafted and distributed to our partners and the associations to look at it and then give us their feedback. But there will be, there'll be massive outreach. I mean, we'll, we'll do everything we can to, to reach that.
Excellent. Thank you. Amy?
So what is the, the projected cost per employee who seeks blood testing from this provider?
It's about $45.
Okay.
All those in favor of Resolution 5290? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
The resolution passes with a six to zero with one abstention with student Representative Davidson voting?
Aye.
Voting aye, okay. The next meeting of the Board will be held on June 28, 2016, and this meeting is adjourned.